Afternoon, everyone. As board chair for the afternoon, I'm going to claim a point of order. And before we begin the meeting, Ms. Carter has an introduction to make.
Board members, I just wanted to introduce to you Ms. Jessica Hart. And Ms. Hart came to OPS mid-March of this year. She's a product of OPS and a graduate of Northwest High School. Jessica then went on to UNO and graduated with a degree in behavioral science. She has joined our team as the new retirement technician. Prior to coming to OPS, she was a credit analyst with a medical staffing company who provided supplemental staffing to hospitals. She is no stranger to OPS, as she has encountered former high school colleagues and a distant relative right here in the TAC building. She's training, she's in training on retirement administration and has caught on quickly. She has begun building relationships with our partnering departments such as human resources and accounting. Jessica has already been adopted by some of our retirees. She is demonstrating this will be a good addition to the OSERS team. So, we welcome Jessica to the, to the team and to the OPS family.
Welcome, Jessica. Ms. Carter speaks very highly of you as an addition to the team, so welcome aboard. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was previously given in the 2021-2022 OSERS meeting schedule adopted June 2021. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the OSERS board meeting will be discussed in this meeting as an agenda item regarding future transition board meetings. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the retirement office at the Teacher Administration Center during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board of Education meeting room on the north wall. Ms. Carter, would you please call roll.
Block?
President.
Erdnberger?
Present.
Head?
President.
Hersonbach?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Logan? And Mr. Born had a conflict.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. We have had no, no speakers who have submitted forms to make public comments, so we will be skipping that part of the agenda. Now, I'm going to introduce the members of the Kavanaugh-McDonald team who are here to make a presentation on their valuation report as of January 1, 2022. We have with us Patrice Pat Beckham, there she is, thank you, Brian Hoagie, Hoagay?
Hoagie.
Okay, thank you, and Aaron Schohan. Thank you, thank you. Kavanaugh-McDonald has been the actuary for the OSERS plan since 2010 and is also the actuary for the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement System, meaning there will be a relatively seamless transystem, transition as far as actuaries are concerned with this plan. Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is our pleasure to be with you today to present the results of the January 1, 2022 actuarial valuation. You might remember, we perform a valuation annually as of every January 1st. Just a reminder, so OSERS is what's called a defined benefit plan. It's promising to pay monthly income to employees in the future. Okay, that's a very long-term obligation. If we looked at the stream of expected benefit payments, it would go out in 75, 80, 90 years. So, it's a challenge because we're trying to look at all these benefit payments far out in the future and figure out how to fund them now while people are working. And that's really what the valuation is all about. We're trying to measure assets and liabilities. Liabilities are those future benefit payments. We, we do a lot of calculations, Erin can tell you about that. And we end up looking at where our funded status is now and how we're going to bring money in in the future to balance this out, so the value of the current assets and future assets is equal to the value of the benefit payments. An important piece of what comes out of this valuation is the additional district contribution that has to be made. And we'll talk about that more in a minute. It also gives us a chance to look back over the last calendar year and measure actual experience compared to what the assumptions anticipated. We spend a little bit of time to discuss and disclose risk and the measurements that you as a board should be considering and managing. And Brian will speak to that later. And then we're always looking to see if there are any trends that we want to get ahead of, because if there are, it's always better to make change sooner rather than later. So, what impacted the January 1, 2022 valuation? Well, we had quite a bit going on this year. You might remember, last year, we performed an experience study where we look at all the assumptions and the actual methods that are used in the valuation. And there were a number of recommended changes that came out as a result of that study. Those are first implemented in this valuation, and that impacted our numbers. Probably the single most powerful force in valuation results is what happens on the asset side of the, of the house. Very strong return in 2021 on the market value of assets, about 18%. We'll talk in a little bit about asset smoothing. You know, there's a lot of volatility in market value, so we use a smoothing method to kind of average out the highs and lows in returns. It's called the actuarial value of assets. Return on actuarial value was 9%. And last year, we had what we call a deferred investment loss, which meant our smooth value was higher than market value. I'm happy to report now, we have a net deferred gain, so the market value is actually higher than actuarial value. Feels good to have a little cushion, and it feels really good after the first quarter to have a cushion. We did have unfavorable liability experience. That just means liabilities were higher than what the assumptions anticipated. That was largely due to salary increases that were higher than the assumption. And we've done a little bit of digging, and I think most of that is due to the fact that the salaries used in the January 1, 2021 valuation, which reflected, you know, the, the year of COVID where there wasn't a lot of extracurricular activities. So, those salaries were probably depressed. And so, it was a quote "bounce back" in calendar year 2021. We had a very small increase in the funded ratio, but again, overall, experience was favorable. You might remember, the experience study, we had a recommendation to lower the investment return assumption and some of the other components of the economic assumptions. And the decision was made to, to phase that in over four years to get kind of a more, more gradual glide path on that. So, you can see the steps that are in place for the next three valuations, as well as what we used for this valuation. So, we lowered price inflation five basis points and the real rate of return five basis points. So, our investment return assumption in this valuation is 7.4. It was 7.5. The assumption changes are all prospective. Okay, so the 7.4 is what we're expecting for calendar year 2022. For 2021, the expectation was seven and a half. And that'll be important when Brian and Erin speak about that later. Other assumption changes that came out of the experience study, I'm not going to read through all these, but you might remember, we moved to the most current mortality table, one that is, you know, based on data for public plans. That's most appropriate. We had a change in retirement rates that actually lowered liabilities. And then, the second to the bottom there, in the past, the administrative expenses for the system were netted out of investment return. And we moved to having an explicit component in the contribution rate for expenses. And you'll see that when Brian walks you through the contribution rates. And last but not least, we changed from a 30-year amortization period for variations in experience to 25, and that's kind of best, based on best practices. The State of Nebraska also made that change, so sort of synced everything up for the future. All right, so this slide shows you, if we had used the old assumptions, that means the same as 2021 valuation, for this valuation compared to the new assumptions that came out of the experience study, can see the results are actually very close, which is, even with a, a small change in the investment return assumption, somewhat unusual. So, we had demographic assumption changes that pretty much offset the impact of the economic assumptions. So, there was not a significant change in the unfunded liability. The funded ratio was exactly the same. Contribution rate was just slightly higher. And then, therefore, the additional district contribution was 300,000 higher. I would point out in that footnote, if we reflected the ultimate set of economic assumptions, the unfunded actuarial accrued liability would increase by 99 million, and the additional district would move from 21.8 million to 30.6. So, you can kind of see what, what lies ahead. I mean, we have a, a number of significant changes coming in the next three years. So, OSERS funding, members contribute 9.78% of pay. The State of Nebraska contributes 2%. The school district by statute contributes the greater of 101% of the members' contributions, which would be 9.88%, or the amount necessary to maintain the solvency of the system. And that does not have a unique definition, so if we're going to calculate it, we have to have the definition. So, we did come up with one. And basically, we use the actuarial contribution rate. So, we'll talk about these components, Brian, we'll go through that later in a little bit more detail. But this is basically what the board with input from the actuaries has used as what contribution is necessary to maintain the solvency of the system. And that's what ultimately is used to drive that additional district contribution. So, valuation is what we call a snapshot of the, of the system's financial health on a given date, January 1. If you take it today, it would look different. You could take it every day of the year, and it would be different. Assets clearly are moving, but liabilities are moving because that's based on what's happening with your membership, and there are changes throughout your membership as well. I mentioned that the liabilities of the system are based on the expected future benefit payments. We don't know what those are. We know a lot on the valuation. We know who's entitled to a benefit. We know how many years of service they have. We know what their current salary is. We know what their gender is. But we have to bridge that gap between what we know and what we don't know to quantify liabilities and come up with contributions. So, we use assumptions to do that. There are many sets of assumptions that could be deemed reasonable. Okay, there's not a right answer because nobody knows what happens in the future. So, we develop what we consider, in our professional judgment, to be the best estimate for future experience, and we use that in our calculations. Even if we're right, there will be variations from year to year. And we measure those variations in the valuation, and that adjusts the contribution rate. So, again, bottom line, what comes out of this is a, is a funding progress, funded ratio, unfunded actuarial liability, and then the sufficiency of the, the fixed contribution rates in statute and whether there is an additional district contribution, how much that is. Again, the big driver on the positive side this year is the rate of return of almost 18% on market value and 9% on that actuarial or smooth value. That did spin off a gain. An actuarial gain just means better than what the assumptions anticipated, 21 million. Flip side, we had an actuarial loss on liabilities. They were 15 million higher than what we would have anticipated. The district contributed an additional, almost $2 million in 2021. So, they contributed more than kind of the minimum required by statute. The UAL is basically the system's debt. So, if you make extra contributions, it lowers the debt. It goes straight to the debt. That's a positive. Again, our unfunded liability changed just a little bit, reflected in there are a lot of, a lot of factors, and Brian will walk through that with you. Unfunded ratio held steady on a smooth value, 62 to 63%. But you can see on market value, it increased from 59 to 66, and you see that strong 18% return showing up in that funded ratio. So, I'm going to let Aaron take over and walk you through the data.
Thank you, Pat. As Pat said, my name is Aaron, and today I'll be covering the system membership and asset information. So, on this first slide, what we see here is a breakdown of the active membership by certificated and non-certificated, as well as by the individual tiers. As a refresher, tier one refers to members who be, who joined the system before July 1, 2013. Tier two covers July 1, 2013 through July 1, 2016. Tier three is July 1, 2016, 28, to July 1, 2018. And then, tier four covers members who joined after July 1, 2018. As you can see from the table, active membership in the first three tiers has been dropping as tier four has been increasing. And that's because as, as members leave the system, they are replaced by tier four members. And as that trend continues, the cost of the, of the benefits to the plan are expected to decrease. And finally, overall, we saw a small decrease to the active membership from January 1, 2021 to January 1, 2022. There we go. And on this next slide is just a graphical representation of a lot of the numbers we saw. On the previous slide, the different shades and the different colors show the, the counts by tier, where blue represents tier one membership, green represents tier two, tier two, red represents tier three, and orange represents tier four. Kind of the key takeaway from this slide is that even though tier one members are, are, the tier one group closed almost a decade ago, they still make up almost half of the active membership. And as time moves on, that, that orange, those orange slices will continue to take up a larger and larger piece of the pie. There we go. I'll figure it, I'll figure this out eventually. And on this slide, we show a summary of the counts for the total active, or total system membership. At the top, we show the active counts broken down by certificated and classified. And as you can see, the classified active membership did not change, and that's actually accurate. We double-checked to make sure that was correct. And then, again, you can see that the active membership decreased slightly. Retires and disableds increased a little bit. Inactive, non-vested membership increased by about 25%. And just as a quick explanation of what it means to be an inactive, non-vested, those are members who left active employment before becoming vested or reaching five years of service. And so, those members are still owed a refund of their benefits, and they haven't been paid out yet. So, those refunds that are payable are included in our liabilities. All right. And now, we'll move on to the asset section as a brief overview of what we mean when we talk about the actual value of assets. The market value of assets is the, the, the value of the system's asset fund as of the valuation date. But most of our, or our calculations for our purposes are driven by market-related or the actuarial value of assets. And this is set equal to 75% of the expected value of assets plus 25% of the actual, actual market value. And on this slide, we, we show the historical rates of return on both the actuarial value and the market value of assets. The blue line represents the rate of return on the market value of assets, while the red line represents the rates of return on the actual value. And this graph really illustrates the value of using an actual, an asset smoothing method. As you can see, the rates of return on the red line are much less volatile. And then, I also wanted to point, point out on the data table below the graph, you can see that under 2022, the assumed rate of return was 7.5%. Now, as part of the experience study, obviously, we, we've stepped down from 7.5% to 7.4%, but that 7.4% is forward-looking. And so, when we're measuring the, the results, or when we're measuring the experience for the prior year, we, we go back to the 2021 valuation, and in that valuation, the assumed rate of return was 7.5%. And so, next year, the, or, in this year, in 2022, the assumed rate of return will be 7.4%. And, let's see here with that. And on this final slide for the assets, we just show a breakdown, a brief overview of the changes from the 1121 asset values on both the market and the smooth basis, and, as well as 1122. Kind of a key thing to take away from this is the, is the favorable return on the market value of assets, 17.8%. This favorable experience resulted in a, in a return on the actual value of assets of 8.9%, which is above the assumed 7.5% and resulted in a $21 million actual gain on assets. And as Cecilia was talking about earlier, the 63 million in deferred asset losses has been recognized. And now, there is now a, as of 1122, there is a $63 million deferred asset gain. And so, that provides a nice cushion for any adverse investment experience that may occur during 2022. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Hoagie.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Couple people still have their eyes open, so we'll see if the third actuary can put the rest of you guys to sleep here. So, funded status is basically the, the difference between the actuarial assets and the liabilities. So, Pat talked a bit about the liabilities, the projected benefits that we're bringing back to today. Aaron just went through the assets, and that's really what we're doing here. We're comparing the assets and liabilities to help us get our contributions and, and our unfunded. So, that difference is the actuarial, or the, the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. The funded ratio is just your assets divided by the liability, kind of a measure of this, those two. And so, on this slide, we look at the, the 1122 versus the 1121 comparative, just one year over one year. And so, as Pat mentioned earlier, actuarial funded ratio on the actual liabilities is up just a little bit from 63, from 62 last year, and the unfunded liability pretty close, that 913 million. Graph of the historical funded ratio on the next slide, kind of going back about 15 years. There's a few bumps, bumps here. It was like 2016, 2017, I see a little spike in the, in the funded ratio. And that was where we reset the, the actuarial value of assets to the market value. We had some deferred gains. We set those equal, and that kind of spiked up the funded ratio there. But then, the Great Recession hit, and then it all came tumbling back down. It was decreasing for the next five, six, seven years. In 2017, we had some assumption changes and lowered our assumed rate of return, and that's that next kind of drop there. And then, we've kind of been hovering right around the 60, 65% range for the last, last five years or so. So, just kind of a historical graph to show you where things have kind of been. So, the change in the unfunded liability from, from last year to this year, as Pat said, there's a number of different pieces that, that go into this. And this kind of shows you how we got from that 914 million to the 913 this year. Won't go through all of them, but a couple of the, the pieces. The, the $2 million decrease, that's the additional contributions that we did put in above and beyond the additional district that's, that's required. We had touched on the, the $21 million gain that Aaron mentioned from, from the good asset experience that we had. So, again, that flows through to reduce our, our debt or unfunded liability. The $15 million liability experience, the increase, again, Pat touched on that as well, that, that's the, the higher salaries than were expected. So, anything that's different with our, our actuarial assumptions flow through this liability experience. And so, those were kind of the main pieces as we got there. Like I said, not, not much of a difference from, from the prior year, the 914 to the 913. So, if you look at the contribution rate, there's a number of pieces that, that go into this rate. The first is a normal cost rate. And so, when we talk about the normal cost, this is essentially the ongoing cost of the system. So, our active membership, anybody that's currently working, they're working for, for the system, they're earning a benefit, right? And so, that's kind of the, the cost, and we need to come up with what the rate is that we, we would, we would have to fund their benefits until they retire. So, that's kind of the ongoing cost, that normal cost piece. The, the administrative expenses is what Pat had mentioned earlier that we changed this year. They are now an explicit assumption as a percent of payroll that we will include to, to capture those administrative expenses for, for the system. Before, they came out as part of the investment return assumption, that's, that's a change from, from the prior year. And then, the third piece that goes into this contribution rate is that UAL payment, or the unfunded liability. So, that $913 million that we have, it's there. How do, how do we pay it off? We need to come up with a way to systematically pay off this debt in the future, and that's what this, this portion of the contribution does. We pay it off as a level percent of payroll, which means that we're going to come up with a dollar amount, but to keep the, we assume our payroll is going to increase in the future. And if we want that rate of pay to be the same, that means our dollar amount of payments also needs to be increasing in the future. So, if you think like you're paying off your mortgage, if you have a 30-year mortgage that's fixed, you're going to pay $1,500 a month, and that, that's flat, right? That dollar amount's going to be flat. But the way we're calculating this to pay off our debt with, with the system is that it's increasing. So, if we keep that rate of pay the same, payroll's increasing, our payments are also increasing. So, we would increase that 1,500 slowly up at 3.2% is our assumption that payroll will increase. So, a little bit different than, than, you know, maybe you've seen at home with, with some here, if you have a mortgage. The last piece with it is that we do what's called layers. There's a layered amortization, and that just means every year, when we have these actuarial gains and losses or experience or assumption changes that come through, we create a new slice or a new base, a new layer that, that comes through. And we pay off each of these over a certain period. The legacy piece, like kind of the first base that we set up in 2019 was over 30 years, and that will run out. So, in 30 years, that will be paid off, and I think we have 27 left on, on that one. Any new base that we have, so this experience that we just saw, will be over 25 years. And the one that's 25 years is gone, that piece is paid off. Next year, we will have a new slice that's over a 25-year period. And so, it's kind of, it's a little bit more transparent to see when, if you look at the, the full 100-page report, you can kind of see it in there with some, some of that information. So, what the numbers look like for the, for the contributions, we have year-over-year, again, looking at the 2022 versus the last year's valuation. The first section talks about those three pieces of, of the contribution rate that we just went through. The normal cost, the administrative expenses, and then the, the unfunded liability payment. So, overall, we're at 27.19% of payroll, down about 34 basis points from, from the prior year. Some of that is normal cost coming down as that new tier comes in, that helps reduce our ongoing cost. And then, also, the, the unfunded liability rate came down a little bit too because of that good asset experience that we had. The statutory rates for, for members, for the state, for the employer, still the same, those, those fixed rates. So, if we take the difference between what our total rate is by what the, the contributions that are coming into the system, that's towards the bottom here, that additional required district contribution of the 5.53% of payroll. Our expected payroll for the next year is 390 million. So, if we do a little math, we get 21.8 million is our additional district contribution. So, even though the payroll went up from last year, the projected payroll went up from last year, that rate came down enough, so we're even a little bit below what the 22.2 last year. So, on this slide, slide 21, this shows the change in the required contribution rate. So, real similar to the, the change in the unfunded liability, just in, in rate form instead of dollar form. So, the pieces that we came down from the 27.53, the 27.19, again, the investment experience had, had a big impact on that. That was 32 basis points. That was 32 basis points that we decreased the, the rate. A couple that were different from, in this one versus the, the unfunded liability dollar amount, see, the change in the normal cost rate is seven basis points, it's decreasing. Again, that's that, the tier four members coming in, the lower cost members, as we bring more of them in and lose some of the tier one, two, three members, that helps reduce that, that normal cost rate, or that ongoing cost of the system. And the next one down, that, that payroll growth different, different than expected. What this is, is that, that unfunded liability dollar amount that we were just talking about, that we have to pay off, that, that debt that we have, because we, we take that debt, the dollar amount, divided by the payroll to get a rate, our payroll was higher than we expected last year. If you have a, a number that doesn't change in the numerator, divided by a bigger number in the denominator, the rate comes down. And because that payroll was bigger than we expected, that helped reduce the, the total contribution rate as well, by that 0.17%. So just kind of a reconciliation on how those pieces came together. So probably one you've, you've been waiting for, the projected additional district contributions for the next seven years. So we see in 2022, that's the 21.8 million that, that we just went through, that we saw. These projections do have all of the deferred gains. So Aaron mentioned we have 63 million in deferred asset gains that, if all assumptions are met, and I'm going to guarantee you they're not going to be, but if they're all met, those will flow through over the next, over the next three years. This also has the step down of the assumptions. So right now, we're at the 7.4, we're going to, as Pat showed, we're going to go down the 7.3, then the 7.2, then the 7%. This is all built into these projections as well. So that's kind of why you see the little bit of a step up in the additional district contribution for the next three years, because we're lowering the assumed rate of return, we're phasing in those assumptions, and then it kind of levels out after that right around 30 million, or 29, 30 million. So now, if you had looked at... For this valuation, what it would be? You have that in the report, don't we? I think we do. Yeah, so it'd be 30.6 million if they were all phased in, or we went all the way through and didn't phase them in, or the next three years, went straight to the 7%. And that's kind of what we see here with, you know, that's a mix of the deferred gains, but kind of ramping up to that 29, or roughly that 30 million, once we do get to that point. So that's kind of the results of the report. There's something else we want to go through. There's actuarial standards of practice that actuaries have to follow, and there's this one that's 51, towards the end of them, but it's assessment and disclosure of risk. And so for a couple slides, we want to just touch on some of the risk factors for, for the system, and not to scare you or anything, but just to give you some more information about potential risks. So the biggest one for, for OSERS, and really any public pension plan system, is investment risk, right? The volatility in the market's going to drive a lot of things, contributions, funded ratios. And that's, and that's no different with, with Omaha Schools. The other thing is, OSERS is a really mature system. They've been around for a long time, which means we have a lot of in-pay, a lot of members that are receiving benefits. Actually, 60% of our liability is due to members that are currently receiving payments versus members that, you know, are still accruing benefits, or waiting to draw their benefits. And what that means is if we do have a big shift in, in the market, we have some volatility, say we take a big asset loss, remember, we amortize this over payroll. And because our, our actives are less of a portion of our total liability, there's less payroll to amortize that over. Remember how we were saying the rate went down, we had that big, the more payroll than we, we expected? Because we have so many inactives, that does kind of reduce an extra, or introduce another risk to the system. So nothing to be concerned about, just kind of a, an FYI on some, how that, some of that works. On this one, another risk measure we look at, it's called the asset volatility ratio. It's really just the assets divided by payroll, and that, that ratio's 4.26. I wouldn't get hung up on that too much. A lot of people ask, is, is it good to be high, is it good to be low? It's just a number. It, it doesn't matter. It's not good or bad. But what this does tell us is, it gives us a measure that we can look at to say, if there is a fluctuation in the market, how does it affect our contribution rate? So what we looked at here is, what if for one year, for calendar year '22, we had a 10% decrease, or 10% return, less than what we assumed? So we're assuming 7.4% for this upcoming year, what if we only earn negative 2.6%? So we missed our, our target by 10%. What would that do to our rate? Well, we know that's about $163 million loss, because we know the assets are 1.6 billion, and that translates to about a 2.74% increase in the contribution rate. So that's kind of, kind of gives you a gauge. And now, numbers are great, but it's sometimes hard to picture, what does 2.74% mean, right? So we'll go back to our, our favorite additional district contribution graph or projection. So on this slide, on slide 25, we have the gray bars that are what we already saw, right? That's if all assumptions are met, we hit our assumed rate of return every single year. The blue bars are what happens if one year, just one year, we miss our assumed rate of return by 10%. What's that do to the additional district contribution? And remember, the, the statutory rates, members, the state, they're all putting in their fixed rate, anything that we miss, or that goes to that unfunded liability, all flows to the additional, additional district contribution. So if we look at it, just in 2023, the additional district, again, if this situation happens, is 25.6 million, up about a million from, from the slide, a couple, a couple slides ago. If you go out a few years to say 2028, it's about 39 million, about $10 million higher in additional district contribution, just by missing it by 10% that one year. And again, I'm not saying we're going to miss it by 10%, I'm not projecting what's going to happen this year. It's just kind of a, an easy number for us to calculate, the minus 10%. And with how the market's going, who knows where, where we end up, but it's kind of a good gauge of, you know, what could happen. If you look at, you know, if it's a minus 5%, it's, I'm sorry, you could, you could say it's about half of, half of what this is. So kind of good information to have. So to wrap up, just some closing, closing comments, we've, we've already touched on all these, but the funded ratio did increase slightly, we're moving in the right direction. We have that deferred gain kind of as a, as a buffer, as a cushion in case we do have less than ideal returns coming, coming through. So that's always, always nice to have. The assumption changes did change the, the results slightly, and we do have more that are, that are coming, phasing in, and we kind of saw that in the, in the projections. The, the contribution for, for 2022, the additional district is 21.8 million, again, down a little bit from, from last year. And then just that, the phasing of assumptions, we're not there yet, right? We still have a few steps to go, and as those do get phased in, that, it was baked in here in, in the projections, but those will increase the additional, additional district contribution and the, the rates, and decrease the funded ratio if all else is, is met. So again, we do have a few more steps to go, so it's just, we're not, took a little bite of the apple, but we're not done yet, so. I will stop there, pause for, for questions. Oh, last slide just says that we're good actuaries, and we know what we're talking about, so I don't need to worry about that one. But yeah, any questions?
Word members, any questions? I might have a couple. Surprise. A couple questions. I'm looking on slide seven, just, not that it matters that much, but it says, to determine, actuarial contribution rate is used to determine the contribution necessary to maintain the solvency of the system. Is that like maintain the solvency for next year, or is that, what is that reference to maintaining the solvency? What period of time does that apply to?
I think that's a long-term solvency plan. So it's not that we're going to pay off all the debt in one year, it's to make sure that in the future, we can still, we're making the proper contributions now to be able to pay off all the benefits in the future that we, that, that members will be owed.
Okay, and the change from the 30-year calculation to the 25-year, statutory, just a good idea? Where did that come from?
Yeah, so that's more of, so that's only in the future. So all current, current bases will still stay at their 30-year fixed period. Any new experience will be over 25 years. And that's really where the actuarial profession is, is moving towards. 30 years is kind of becoming a thing of the past, a little long in most, in, in the actuarial community. And so a lot, a lot of systems are probably moving towards a 20 to 25-year base, or layer for the, for the new experience. So this was kind of the next step to get, get more in line, to be a bit more reasonable going forward. And I think Pat mentioned it as well, the NPERS had moved to, to 25 as, as well last year.
And here, there's a couple references to our funding ratio at 62, 63%. Is that the funding ratio that the statute looks at, the, is the 80, is that comparable to the 80% where if we are 80% or above, we don't have to report anymore, we're not at risk, or whatever the phrase is? So 62 is where we are right now, or 63?
Yeah, the 63, the, the actuarial assets divided, but divided by the actual liability, that, that funded ratio is what is in the statute for that 80%, whether you need to go and speak at the legislative committee down, down on Lincoln. So that is the number.
Has that been going up? I mean, 62 to 63 is up, but do you remember offhand? Seems to me like we're sort of float, we've been floating right around in that area ever since I've been, for the two years I've been paying attention.
You, you are right. So like the last five years, you can kind of see on the graph that we've, that's, this is the funded ratio, the historical funded ratio. Yeah, we've been right around that 60 to 65% range for, for a while. You know, had some not great years on returns, and then this last year was, was much better. And so we've kind of been, with the smoothing method, it's kind of kept it a bit more stable. As, as Aaron mentioned, had we been using the market value, the funded ratio, you would have seen go up and down a little bit more than this. But yeah, we've been right at that 60, 65% mark.
Now, at, at some point, I thought there was a prediction that if we met these assumptions and the contributions and so on and so forth, that there was an end date where we would, can assume, based on the fact that no assumptions are useful, the 80% point, by 2040, do I, was there a, was there a year that we had out there at some point? Or am I remembering a totally different conversation?
I don't know the 80% date.
Yeah. Oh, Scott.
Sorry about that.
And now?
Yeah, back when we were doing the experience study information, there was an analysis done that showed basically that's when we would trigger the 80% level. I can dig the, the assumptions out, but that is correct.
So it was, okay, and was it 2040, or in the 40s someplace, do you remember?
We are, it was, what's the current 100%?
Oh, he, she says the 40s is when we hit 100%, that we might hit 80% in the 30s.
Well, maybe accelerated with the returns last year, I suppose, based on the, the work that they've done. But it was, it was roughly three and a half, almost four years before the 100% level was going to get hit in the table.
Okay, so we can start waiting for this to go up and up?
Ms. Sternberger, as I recall as well, we did look at several scenarios when we were working at the Better Together Coalition. We looked at several scenarios, if we made some additional kinds of changes, as we were just kind of looking at different ideas, and that may be where you're getting some of what you, maybe what you are remembering as well.
Okay.
We had them run a bunch of assumptions for us, and some of those assumptions were based on if we made contributions or made some additional changes. So that may be what you're thinking about.
My last question has to do with the assumptions that you use. For example, you said that payroll this last year was higher than expected, because as we know, there was nobody taking tickets at, at athletic games and earning any of those higher salaries the previous year. I guess, looking at the nature of our business as opposed to businesses and generally, do you look at some of the features that are peculiar, so to speak, to education, such as, you know, a lot of our teachers depend on some additional income from these extracurricular things? And whether or not, and I'm not saying it's the case, but the, anecdotally, we might have more retirees than usual. I don't know if that's in fact the case. So do those, do those realities of our profession play into what you look at as you're making your assumptions?
They, they do, and we looked at all that when we did the, the experience study, where we, we analyzed all this data. So the salary datas would have those additional pieces built in, when people are taking tickets or coaching, or things like that. That's all built in the salaries. And so when we analyze it, the year-over-year salary changes, those would go into our assumptions. So that is, that is included. With the retirement and the, the termination experience that, that we see, we can look back over the last few studies, again, we have a, usually a, a four-year period, I think is in statute, that we have to look at the, do an experience study. And so based on that data, we will, we came up with what the, the retirement assumptions look like, or termination assumptions would, would look like. Every once in a while, like COVID hits, or something like that, and you have a weird year, right? Say that we have a lot more retirements, or a lot more terminations, or, or deaths, that we would look at. A lot of times, we'll say, we may not think this is a long-term trend, and we could pull that, that data out of our analysis. And so if, if it's a trend that continues, I think that was on one of Pat's early slides, like if we see trends that are, that are happening, if we continually have more retirements than, than expected, we could go back and look at our assumptions and say, maybe we do need to make a change. But if it's a one-year spike, we usually just let that flow through the actuarial experience, recognize it, and then think that it's going to be more normal going forward. So I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Part of my question was, we knew last year, or the year before, that our payroll went down for a reason that was COVID-related, and there was some reference to, you know, we had an, you know, an unexpected, I think somebody said an unexpected increase in payroll, and I'm just wondering why it was unexpected, because it, it should have been expected that we had the largely athletic COVID effect in that first year, and we, it seems to me like we should have anticipated that we would go back up to where we were two years earlier or something.
Yeah, and the, the unexpected...
Am I missing something? Oh, you think it was mostly raises? Okay, never mind. It's okay that you didn't expect it.
Well, and can't, aren't we possibly taking into account too, some of those overages that some of us teachers are doing as well? That's also kind of helping raise salaries in, I mean, yeah, just because I know that there's, with teacher shortages, there's a lot of overages going on. So from then to now, and I feel like that's...
And I don't mean to be macabre, but did we, and you may not be the person that knows, it's probably a Cecilia question, did we see an unusual, did, did COVID deaths affect our pool of retirees in an unusual death rate kind of way? Do you know? And you may not be the person that knows that.
We do have the number of, of deaths that happened this past year. What we've seen in most systems, and let's see if it's the case here too, is that we've had a few more actual deaths than, than normal when COVID went through. But as far as the liability that was released, what we're looking at, right, the liabilities, we saw it was more deaths on the, on the later age, where they had less of a liability impact on the system. So even though the counts were up, we didn't see a lot of experience, gain-loss, that hit the system. And let me get to your gain-loss page here. And yeah, mortality experience was a $1 million loss, oh, sorry, gain. So actually really close, very small percentage of liability. So even if the, the counts were up, the, the benefits that we were losing, they were the smaller benefit people, and so it...
The old people.
Yeah.
Got it. Really old, way older than me.
I'm going to take a step back to, just to your last question. I think you had it answered, but as far as the, the salary experienced, it, it was unexpected. Remember that we're looking long-term too. Like we're looking, we're setting 30-year assumptions, and so if we do see a spike one year, or we had teachers working more or, or less in, in one year, those are kind of the experience that we know is going to happen. We're still looking long-term as kind of what our expectations are. And so even if we do have, you know, blips in the, in the road, those kind of get recalibrated each year with evaluation, and we start new with those forward-looking assumptions. So I think long-term, we're still comfortable that the assumptions are reasonable too.
Great, well, that was all of my dog-eared pages, so I'm, I am done.
Excellent. I always love your questions.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I was going to maybe go back to the funded ratio, just for clarity. Brian, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong here, but I would expect we're actually going to see a decrease if our assumptions would actually come true for the next three or four years, we'd see a decrease because of the dropping of the, or the changing of all the assumptions over the next four years?
I think-
Either a slight decrease or maybe level.
You're right, the assumptions will decrease the funded ratio, but that deferred gain that we have, I think they almost essentially offset for the next few years. So I think we'll kind of, I think it's planned or projected to stay about level until we get all the assumptions in, get the deferred gains recognized, and then start creeping up again as we're paying off that unfunded liability or that debt. But yeah, you're right, that that, just the assumptions-wise, would drive it down.
And for the benefit of the board members, I can't remember, I know we talked about this at the OPS Board, but the reason that the assumption went down to 7%. Did we talk about that here already, in this setting? Okay, never mind. It's that the state that has a 7% investment return. And so, we had to, by the time we're about to turn over our program to the state, we wanted to be, didn't want to have a huge drop in assumptions at that point. So we've sort of ratcheting it down over the next three or four years. So we will be at the state 7% investment assumption when we become a state fund. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct. And because the Nebraska Investment Council invests assets for OSERS as well as the state because they're invested essentially the same way, we would expect long-term that we would essentially earn roughly the same rate of return. And so that's where the 7% kind of we would expect would match long-term.
Any other questions? I should just be asking myself, if I've got any.
Question for you.
There you go.
What's our role now?
Out of order.
I mean, I love listening to this interesting story, but what's our role?
It is an excellent question. Maybe I might call, maybe I might call on our legal team to-
I'm happy to not take this one.
Thank you, actuaries. Yeah, you don't have to answer that one.
I believe statutorily, generally, the requirement of the OSERS trustees' transition board is to make sure and ensure that transition is happening effectively through the process going from the OSER system to the state system for its management. So that's generally, in a nutshell, the responsibility of the trustees.
So as it relates to this report, our role is just what? Just to review it?
Informational.
Information, okay.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I may, one second. Mr. Hirschenbach, we won't be accepting it, it's just being filed. You have no yea or nay on it.
There's kind of a labyrinth of committees and reporting because there is an OSERS subcommittee of the OPS Board, and Mr. Head and I are both on that committee. So in some respects, on that committee, we report what we did here, and then we report that to that committee, and then that committee reports out to the board at large. So it's part of a, sort of a, three-tier information process. So yes, I appreciate you sitting here and going through the actuarial report, just for the fun of it. Do you have any other questions? Okay, well, since our job is to pay attention to transition, Ms. Carter will now give us a, thank you very much. Are we, do I excuse them and they can leave, or do they?
They can leave if they want.
Okay, or stay. Ms. Carter will now give us an oral report on the transition from the OSERS OPS program into N-PERS. Ms. Carter?
Okay, so representatives from OSERS, OPS, and N-PERS, excuse me?
Representatives from OSERS, OPS, and N-PERS, along with Gartner Consulting, have been meeting to review the data size, data construction of the OSERS membership and operations. Gartner, and we've also laid out timelines as presented by Gartner. Gartner Consulting, as I mentioned once before, has been engaged to assist N-PERS with issuing an RFP and to go through, to help them with the selection process, to seek a consultant to actually oversee the transition of data from OPS slash OSERS to N-PERS. Per the Gartner timeline, this transition manager should be selected and contracts negotiated by December 2022 slash January 2023. That leaves us 18 months to actually implement the project. We have been behind the scenes, working with N-PERS, to actually try to look at data and evaluate how much we'll need to go over, and how much space this will take once it goes into the N-PERS HIRS system. One thing I will let this board know is that I keep emphasizing with Gartner and N-PERS that the selected, what we call "go-live" dates, or that point where we make a decision that, yes, this will go live on September 1, 2024, okay? Originally, that date was set for July, and I pushed it back to February. If something, if there's a hiccup, we need to know early, right, so that we can react to that, as opposed to July trying to react to something that is supposed to go live September 1. Again, as I said, we're still at that stage of selecting the consultant. So it's a little bit of that waiting to get going, and then I suspect that once that consultant is in place, that's when it's really going to ratchet up. We are meeting subcommittees with OSERS. We have a separate steering committee of more high level. And then people, staff that are in the nitty-gritty, that's a different committee. And they are working with each other back and forth to answer questions, how do you find data? How do you calculate, right? Because all this will have to be built into the N-PERS system. So, there's work going on. The big public work isn't probably going to start until next year.
Does anybody have any questions about what's going on with the transition? For the benefit of at least three of us in the room that are already receiving OSERS payments on a monthly basis. Hi, girls. Part, I just wanted to confirm that one of the things that's happening is, like you said, we have a way of calculating and keeping track of who gets what when, what the adjustments are on an annual or whatever basis, which is different from any of the programs that N-PERS is now managing. And so what we're doing is making sure that our methods of doing that will be understood or compute, there will be a computer program sitting in Lincoln that does what you and your team are doing up here. So hopefully seamless, and I really appreciate your reference to pushing it forward, I guess I think of it as, to February, so that we'll have a good six months really to see whether our computers really can do it.
You raise a really good point. I think everyone needs to remember that the statutes, there are some slight nuances between the N-PERS in statute, how to, how things are calculated, what definitions are, versus N-PERS. And so it's those little nuances. The one that comes to my head all the time is how we calculate a year, right? And we look at hours. And so, you know, those little nuances have to be programmed into the logic. So, yeah, we are working with that behind the scenes, making sure. Another thing I wanted to help the board understand and rest comfortably with, you know, as my team is processing things this year, and we're seeing little things like, "Oh, let's put this on a separate spreadsheet," so that we can say, "Here, case in point, qualified domestic relations orders." Right? So they're embedded in our system, but, and we have some that the person hasn't retired yet, but we know when they retire, they're going to be subject to a qualified domestic relations order. We have a system, we have the file, but, you know, with all this transitioning, does that make it over there in time? How are we going to do this? So little things like that are being put to the side, so we can say, "Here's a folder of things you need to look for." And when we say, "Look," when I say, "Here's a folder," yes, it's on paper, here's what you need to look for, but it's in our files somewhere. Disabilities, you know, we have deferred disabilities. You need to look for these people, you need to look for these quadros.
We are not the only pension in the history of pensions that has made a transfer like this. So really, what we're looking for is someone who has an expertise in knowing what we might be doing differently that somebody else needs to know about.
Yes.
And they have presumably a checklist of how to, you know, so that we make sure that we talk to each other.
Right.
And now, would now be a time for you to mention that there will, there's going to be a new hire other than this person that will be up here? I couldn't remember when that was.
I can bring it up now.
But it's kind of the same sort of notion of how we are merging our systems.
So, just talking a little bit about OPS staffing, OSER staffing. So we, you met Jessica earlier. That is because a seasoned retirement technician has transferred out of the retirement department and accepted a position with Student Services here at OPS. So they're gone. And we hired Jessica to come in. And she is fully aware that the position is a term-limited position, okay? We also received a separation notice, resignation letter, from our retirement specialist, who is Jim Ellis. But he gave us a July 31, 2022 date of separation. Jim has been with the retirement office 20-plus years, okay? So he has a lot of historical knowledge. We are in the process, well, N-PERS is in the process of hiring the replacement, and that person will be assigned to OSERS in Omaha. And this way, they will stay on as an N-PERS employee after September 1, 2024. Now, this, the concept, the idea of the concept has been approved by the N-PERS Board. The concept has been internally approved here at, accepted here at OPS, and we're going to work through the details once the Nebraska Department of Administration okays the position because government work is a little bit slower. And so once they okay the position and we're able to, my counterpart at N-PERS is able to post the position and fill it, then we'll work with OPS and figure this all out, so that somebody identified can work here, work remotely, come in, work with Jim, and just try to absorb, we all try to absorb as much knowledge as possible. You know, we've been working on cross-training. One of the things I've taken on, because I know between these three women, I am now doing pension payroll. The pension payroll will go out. And Jessica is learning refunds. I mean, she is now getting to the point where she can process them. You know, those are the two main, what I consider the most important. Then, you know, calculations, we already had that cross-trained. But getting that pension payroll out, I'm taking that one on. And I'm happy to report the May pension payroll went out, and no one's complaining.
I take great comfort from knowing that there will be somebody starting to work here as soon as all those approvals can go through, who, when the ball drops in September of '24, is now working down there, but has been working with you and our system. And I hope all of the pensioners take equal comfort from that. Did you have anything else to report?
You went, I can do the rest of it from up here. Okay. Let's jump to the executive director's report, and then we'll go back to the other item. The voluntary correction resulting from the compliance audit from last December has been filed with the IRS. It was filed last month, and we are awaiting review and comment from the IRS through ICE Miller. And then following the voluntary correction, then we'll move forward with the seeking a favorable determination letter. So that's in progress. The audit, remember the mandatory audit by the state auditor that was required? That is wrapping up. The timeline includes an exit meeting by early June, so that they can file their report by the June 30 deadline. In all likelihood, I've been talking with the Board of Education Secretary, Matt, and we'll probably have a presentation to the Board of Education over the summer. Okay? I will tell you, there will be findings. There are going to be findings. This was a very deep dive. I will give you one slight insight. Today's discussion was because we cannot locate tables from 22 years ago. They were put into a mainframe 22 years ago. That mainframe got copied over into PeopleSoft. No one has an email from 22 years ago about this, these tables. So that'll be finding. Okay. And then, I think that was, yeah, that was it on the executive director report. Okay. Then, Ms. Chair, if you will finally go back to the, let's discuss the schedule for board meetings, I will turn everything back over to you.
Thank you very, very much. Except I might ask you to remind me what was, what was our board schedule supposed to be, so we can talk about whether there's any point in meeting or not.
Last January, we elected to meet quarterly. So that would have been, you know, either March or April, depending on, since we started last January. But there really wasn't much to report. And that's why we pushed it to May, to at least get the valuation report in front of the board, and have this as an opportunity to ask those, you know, burning questions. It is my recommendation, Mr. Hirschenbach said something last January and said, "Every six months, just get an update." And I laughed, right? I'm thinking, yeah, every six months, get an update. So, but it is at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you very much, yeah. The question is, not is there so much information that we receive that we need to process quarterly, but is it in the best interest of the OSERS and people who care about the OSERS for us to meet, continue to meet quarterly or not? And again, very little, I can assure you, very little will be happening. It'll be mostly reports, I think, from Cecilia about what, if any, changes are making in connection with the transition. So your thoughts on how frequently should we meet? Mr. Head?
Yeah, thank you, President Hirschenberger. So I know that this board has fairly limited statutory authority after the-
So, I know that this board has fairly limited statutory authority after the bill passed a couple of years ago. But if we move to meeting only every six months instead of quarterly, are we at risk of, you know, missing any reporting deadlines or approvals of, you know, anything that I guess this board would need to do to function, or for OSERS to function? Yeah, no, I think we're, we're on the same line.
Could we schedule them quarterly? And if we don't have anything, cancel? So, I mean, I don't, I don't want to get together just to, just for the sake of-
And I agree with Spencer, well, I agree with all of you, actually. Like, if we, if there's really nothing to report, we just not have that meeting that month, because again, you're right, it's really not necessary to-
I kind of worry about that, just because you can obviously say, you don't really have any, right?
Okay.
Showstorm or something like that, I just, trust me, I don't want any additional meetings. So, it's so there, but you, I just don't want to, I, I, there are a lot of other people who don't necessarily understand the going from 12 to 4. And I just feel like the spirit of what I think was attended, I think they even mentioned if we go quarterly, you know, would be initially, I'm sorry.
Actually, I agree, because I feel like there are people that are wondering what's going on. Chances are, we will always have something to report. Like I said, Ms. Carter will almost always have something to tell us about what meetings are taking place and what transfers have occurred. And I don't think, but for representations from actuaries, I don't think that it should take longer than an hour. We, maybe even just half an hour, which I know is still driving down and driving back. Mr. Roberts, you're standing there for a reason?
Yeah, could I just call out one thing that this board should probably address in the month of June? So the APA will be wrapping up their audit. At the end of June, the APA will present to the OPS Budget and Audit Committee, and in July, in front of the full board. I would recommend that there's at least a meeting in June, toward the end of June, for the APA to present their audit report to this body as well. And to your point, the only thing more boring than an actuarial presentation is an auditor's presentation, so. But anyway, it's, it's something you may want to consider at least for a next meeting or a cycle. Beyond that, it's, it's up to this board.
Point well taken. Okay, so let's, do we know when that date is already? Or do they know when they're going to be?
No, they're still wrapping up fieldwork. They're required to file their report with the state on June 30th. So it will likely be within a week to 10 days before that filing date that they're prepared to have their exit conference.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we want to set a date, or is that something that we can, when we know they're ready?
Not yet, yeah.
So when we know that's available, can we set the, I don't know whether that's, as long as we have 48 hours' notice, we can set the meeting at that point?
As long as you provide, yeah, your, your general 48 hours' notice, you can certainly set a meeting at any time, as long as we have a quorum of the board available to attend the meeting at that time. Yep.
Okay, why don't we have, assume we'll have the meeting in, near the end, before June 30th, with 48 hours' notice, when we have the audit report available? And then we will do quarterly from that date, basically, okay? And we'll get back to each of you when that date is going to take place. And I believe that's everything. Just, I think I already mentioned that Mr. Head and I serve on the OSERS Board, OSERS, I mean, the OPS Board, OSERS Committee. So we will be making a report about this meeting, and then they will be making a report to the OPS Board. And I look forward to seeing all of you at some undeterminate but 48-hour-notice date in June, and have a really great end of the school year, those of you guys that are still in school. Thank you. Meeting adjourned?